There we are. Except me.
Three people in the waiting room.
There's Elizabeth.
Elizabeth and David.
Matt and Elizabeth, can you hear us?
They're not in here.
Okay.
There's Elizabeth.
All right. You don't want to do all.
Who has the official timer?
It's 3:30.
Yeah.
You can go ahead and read, yeah.
I got it. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. This meeting will be held with two of our council members participating electronically via Zoom. And the public is able to join, is also able to join this meeting via Zoom. In order to allow the town clerk enough. Everything is. That better? You getting that now?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't memorize this. Good afternoon. This meeting will be held with two of our council members participating electronically via Zoom. And the public is also able to join this meeting via Zoom. In order to allow the town clerk enough time to make sure that everything is working properly and folks are able to join the meeting, we will begin the meeting in about five minutes or so. Anyone who wishes to speak during public comment should type their name and address in the chat box. And you will be called on and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read by me first. As usual, public comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. Thank you for being patient with us as we adjust to hosting electronics meetings. Good afternoon. This meeting will be held with two of our council members participating electronically via Zoom. And the public is also able to join this meeting via Zoom. In order to allow the town clerk enough time to make sure that everything is working properly and folks are able to join the meeting, we will begin the meeting in about five minutes or so. Anyone who wishes to speak during public comment should type their name and address in the chat box. And you will be called on and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read by me first. As usual, public comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. Thank you for being patient with us as we adjust to hosting electronic meetings.
Text to the D B really.
Answer Jimmy. Is that on mute?
Elizabeth, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Matt, are you there?
Good afternoon. This meeting will be held with two of our council members participating electronically via Zoom. And the public is also able to join this meeting via Zoom. In order to allow the town clerk enough time to make sure that everything is working properly and folks are able to join the meeting, we will begin the meeting in about five minutes or so. Anyone who wishes to speak during public comment should type their name and address in the chat box. And you will be called on and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting will be read by me first. As usual, public comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. Thank you for being patient with us as we adjust to hosting electronic, as we adjust to hosting electronic meetings.
Sheila will be ready to start.
Matt says he's watching.
Matt needs to turn on his audio.
He says it's on.
It's on.
Can you hear me, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I was just waiting for somebody to talk to me.
Sheila, can you hear him?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're all good.
Regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for April the 7th, 2020 is now in session. Please join me in the place of allegiance.
United States of America. For which it stands. One nation.
Indivisible with liberty and justice.
This past Sunday, I asked Pastor Chris Ablit of Duck United Methodist Church if he would consider sharing his thoughts with me about the time we are going through, the time we're living in right now. I also asked him to include a prayer for our council in that message. To my friends and neighbors in Southern Shores, we are all concerned about COVID-19 and rightly so. What started off as something that was happening on the other side of the world has at last come to the Outer Banks. We watch the news and feel like our world is shrinking before our eyes. Seemingly, in the blink of an eye, our whole world has changed. The very foundations of our society feel unstable right now. I have an abundance of caution, we have to stay home in order to stay safe. But many of us don't feel safe. We feel isolated, afraid, unsure about what each day will bring. But in the swirling mix of emotions that we are all feeling right now, I am reminded tells us that our God is up to the challenge. I encourage us to draw on our faith in this time. Since the beginning of our republic, faith has been the bedrock of our nation's heritage. Buoyed by the hope that comes from that faith, let me offer this prayer. Oh God, our Father, we turn to you in our, in our hour of need and humbly ask for your help. Help us to provide the direction and decision-making that our community needs from us right now. Strengthen us for the task before us. Grant us the gift of wisdom, sound judgment, and compassionate leadership. Guide us in these challenging times and help us to serve your people well. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you. I'm most grateful to Pastor, Pastor Chris for his message. I appreciate him taking the time to do that for us. At this time, I would make a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting with the deletion of item four, Budget Workshop Business in its entirety, items A through F. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Are there any other parts of the agenda you want to not deal with today?
I can't hear it. Is there any, it comes from the speakers. Is there any other parts of the agenda that you want to have amended today?
No, that's the only thing I would like to see amended today. Any further, any further questions or discussion? I'm going to call for a vote by roll, by roll call method, so I'll ask you if you're, I'll start with, with Councilman Connors, Jim, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
I'm also an I. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motions made and carried to amend the agenda as I, as I just stated. At this time, I would ask for a motion, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion, if you will, to approve the consent agenda, item E, tab one in your book.
I'll second, I'll second to your motion.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? No. Hearing none, I'll, I'll call for a vote to, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Jim? Leo?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so the motion is made and carried to pass the consent agenda as presented. At this time, I'll call on the interim town manager, finding director for his report. Wes?
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, everyone able to join us. First, I'll start off with the town's response to COVID-19. Town offices have been and remain closed to the public. Services are still being provided via email, virtual meetings, phone, fax, our online permitting system, and our outdoor drop box. Solid waste and recycling are being collected on schedule, but the large item pickup that was scheduled for April 3rd has been postponed to a later date. We continue to update our website and Facebook page with COVID-19 related information. In addition, sharing urgent information and the county's emergency bulletins in the town's electronic newsletter. Information being provided by the school of government and continued communication with the other jurisdictions in Dare County have been very helpful as we are all in this situation together. All town employees were reporting to work as normal and practicing social distancing guidelines and cleaning recommendations while working. We are currently all healthy, feeling well, and busy responding to the impacts of this pandemic while continuing to provide the town's usual services. With respect to budget planning, work on the proposed budget continues and all the department's requested expenditures have been added. Due to the anticipated loss of revenue as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, we're working on options that would help offset that loss. We'll present those options to you and seek guidance on projects to include or not include in the proposed budget at council's April 21st Budget Work Session. With respect to Capitol Street Projects, work on the East Dogwood Trail Street Improvement Project continues. The project completion date is still May 1st. Secondly, the bid opening for the Dewberry Lane Street Improvement Project will be held this Thursday at 10:00 a.m., most likely here in the Pitt Center and will most likely be able to set up Zoom for that as well. With respect to the South Dogwood Trail Walking Path, construction on the South Dogwood Trail Walking Path continues. The project is about 70% complete. With respect to the town building's code deficiencies, local architect Mike Flores will soon be working on providing us plans and an estimate for updating the town-owned buildings. We hope to have an estimate soon that we can prepare and release an RFQ for the work in tail. With respect to beach nourishment, three coastal engineering firms responded to the RFQ that the town of Duck released for future beach nourishment and related shoreline management efforts. The goal is to obtain a consultant to assist the towns of Duck, Kitty Hawk, Kill Devil Hills, and possibly Southern Shores in a coordinated effort. Virtual interviews with each of the three firms will take place this Thursday and each town will score each firm and subsequently meet to discuss selection. Also with respect to beach nourishment, this was with respect to funding. Last year, the legislature in session law 2019-224 allocated $11.5 million to NCD EQ's Division of Water Resources Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund to be used to provide grants in an amount not to exceed $2.5 million for each unit of local government during the 2019-2021 fiscal biennium. The deadline for submittal is April 30th of this year and we could apply for one or more projects, which could be the maintenance work in the Pelican Watch area and/or one of the four options recommended in the town's beach management plan. We will seek council's guidance at the April 21st Budget Work Session as to which, if any, project you prefer. Lastly, with respect to bay disposal and our current recycling, we received notice from NCD EQ yesterday that they have authorized all of the local governments in Dare County to continue hauling collected recyclables to the wheel brader facility in Portsmouth with no given timeframe. We also received notice last week from NCD EQ that a MRF in Portsmouth owned by Recycling Disposal Solutions, RDS, out of Roanoke, Virginia is now available. They have been trying to secure a location in Elizabeth City, but so far have been unsuccessful. We now have the option of entering into a contract with RDS that would currently cost around $95 per tonne to have our recyclables, recyclables processed at their facility. That cost does not include collection and hauling of our recyclables. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. If you or any of the council members have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you, Wes. My, my, my one question was, what's that total number if we have to pay for, because you need to pay for the hauling? Or is there any way to?
I've had a discussion with Josh Smoltz with Bay Disposal about the possibility of that and he was not willing to give us a number at this time, how much it would cost if we were to, you know, request and enter into a contract for services for them to haul our recyclables to this other facility. So I do not know. All we know is that based on the current market, it looks like we'd be paying around $95 per tonne just for this facility to take our materials. Does not include a vendor collecting and delivering those materials there for us. So we don't have a total number right now. All we know is it will be $95 per tonne for processing.
Right. Understood. Thank you.
And that material would be recycled or used for energy?
It is a MRF. It would be recycled, processed as recycled.
I have one other thing. It's not a question, but I really wanted to thank all the staff and the mayor and everybody else who's having to deal with this coronavirus. I know you guys are slammed. Dare County, the governor, everybody deserves a, a great big thank you.
Thank you. We're all in this together for sure and we're all trying to work together as best we can.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you want to say? Your, your, your report time is up right now, if you want to.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to report tonight.
We'll get you later.
Thank you.
Okay. This time I'll open general public comment and I have a few I'm going to read that were written in or sent in to us earlier. The seat. Oh, look, I'm going to read that. Gotcha. Sorry, thanks, Wes.
Can I talk?
Before I start to read off the ones that I've received earlier, or we received earlier, I would like to say anyone who wishes to speak during public comments should type their name and address in the chat box and you will be called on and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Public comments that were submitted to the town clerk prior to the meeting are the ones I was talking about a minute ago that I will read first. As usual, public comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. If I'm reading your, Sheila will be timing me as I read your, your public comment. And she'll tell me when I've gone, used up to three minutes. Thank you. This from Mr. Fred Newberry, 267 North Dogwood Trail. Sheila, following my comments, following my comments, I'd like to be read during the public comment period of the Southern Shores Town Council meeting of April the 7th. Everyone throughout the globe is being severely impacted by the coronavirus. As a result, there is considerable amount of uncertainty about the future health of individuals and nations worldwide. In addition, researchers at Colorado State University are predicting a heavier-than-average hurricane season in the Atlantic this year. At the local government level, Southern Shores along with surrounding municipalities is having to make difficult decisions about the future health of its citizens as well as the economic health of the town. I highly recommend that the council follow the Dare County manager's lead and develop a zero-increase budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Only essential services should be budgeted and the council should postpone acting on any expenditure for large projects such as beach nourishment, street construction, or other similar projects. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and, and the NC Governor's State of Emergency Declaration and statements he made in last Friday's press conference, there is too much uncertainty about the economic health of North Carolina, the Outer Banks, and Southern Shores. Our unassigned fund balance must be preserved for hurricane contingencies as well as impacts from the pandemic. Following are some of the assumptions to support my thoughts. The 2020 OBX tourist season has already been impacted and most likely rental houses will be nowhere near their seasonal capacity. Even when the, when the state of emergency order is lifted, businesses will be reluctant to visit the Outer Banks as well as other destinations. Many people will probably lose their jobs and businesses will not be allowed to dispose, have the disposable income to vacation. The number of people who have applied for unemployment is staggering. Sales and occupancy tax revenue, excuse me, sales and occupancy tax revenue will be minimal due to lack of rental home income, restaurant and other business sales. Southern Shores depends on proceeds from these taxes as part of its annual revenue. Home sales will be minimal, therefore the town's revenue from transfer taxes will be minimal. New construction remodeling may decline and revenue from permit charges will decrease as well. Real estate taxes may decline as well as there may be many homeowner bankruptcies. The town's tax base could potentially decrease. The stock market is extremely, is extremely volatile and has decreased significantly. As a result, 401K, other retirement programs have incurred extreme losses. There's also, there are also rumors of federal retirement and other annuity being reduced. Since Southern Shores residents are federal retirement, I'm sorry, primarily retirees, they cannot afford any tax increases. Hurricane season is approaching and its unassigned funds should be preserved for emergencies. Our economic and physical health are critical and we must preserve our resources. I appreciate your consideration of my comments and wish the council well in making good decisions today and into the future. Fred Newberry, thank you.
My name is Robert Garber. I'm a property owner in Southern Shores. First, I am shocked that the agenda for this meeting is nothing more than a business as usual. During an emergency, emergency declaration, I expected the agenda to be devoted to issues and actions for coronavirus responses and addressing obvious concerns of those citizens that the council represents. The barring of non-resident property owners from access to their property is wrong and unfair. I retired and moved to Southern Shores in mid-January, but I left on Tuesday, 3/17/20 for a short trip out of town. This action by Southern Shores and Dare County by the control group was not publicized and did not use the emergency email text bulletin system. Moreover, I did not even provide, did not even provide the courtesy of a reasonable time to respond. I was shocked Saturday morning as I prepared to return that I was barred from entry. This action is causing me financial impact, worry, and uncertainty. We planned a stay healthy and play strategy long before the town or the county announced any actions. I prepared my Southern Shores home with supplies and groceries as we intended to sequester there for the duration of the coronavirus outbreak. But they are now lost or unavailable to me. I'm not at my property to maintain it or repair it if needed. There was a recent northeast that may have caused damage. The Dare County Metro said it would require dire circumstances for a non-resident property owner to be allowed in. I do not know if I have dire circumstances without being able to check. Why would the criteria for my access to my property be any different than anyone else's to theirs? Southern Shores must take actions to represent all of its taxpayers and constituents during this time. Because Dare County and Southern Shores have deprived me and my family from the access to use and access, use and quiet enjoyment of my property, I demand the town refund town property taxes for the period that my access is denied. This should be fair and reasonable. This should be a fair and reasonable accommodation. Why should I pay for something I'm not allowed to use? The town council should be determining actions that are fair to all its taxpaying citizens, not just those that have a driver's license with a local address. I demand that the council develop a resolution supporting the rights of its non-resident owners and petition Dare County to allow access to our property. At what point will the denial of access for a certain class of property owner be judged to be unnecessary? When the Dare County COVID-19 infection rate per capita is the same as the national average or some other figure? Is this pandemic likely to continue for a long time until there is a vaccine? Should I, should I anticipate that the health and safety of resident property owners will be committed, continue to require that I be barred from my property until then? As the virus spreads everywhere, no particular place will be safer than another. And unfairly limiting one group of residents, one group of owners, I'm sorry, to their property will not be, will not be effective as workers and delivery drivers and residents come and go.
That's Mr. Garber's floor. Thank you. Southern Shores Council, this is from Peggy South.
My husband and I own a second home on Crooked Back Loop in Southern Shores, North Carolina. Our permanent address is in, is in Virginia Beach. We bought our OBX house in 2011 with the intent of living here, living there permanently upon my husband's retirement within the next few years. We have never rented out our second home. We try to get to the Outer Banks as much as we can, which is mostly during the summer and on school breaks and long weekends. Since, since we have very active tween, twin teenage daughters, we bought the home after renting vacation homes in this, on the Outer Banks for a number of years as we love it there. Between the renting and the buying, we have contributed many dollars to the OBX economy. All the permanent residents, neighbors, contractors, retail and service industry locals that we have encountered in our time there have always been welcoming, polite and happy to meet us and have our business. It's one of the main reasons we decided to buy property there. Everyone is friendly. Front page article this morning of Virginia Pilot newspaper entitled "Tensions Running High in OBX", as well as the vitriol I've seen online from both locals and non-resident property owners is highly disturbing and disappointing. My intent is not to add to the tension, but to try to obtain some clarification as to if and when non-resident, non-residents may be allowed back in to maintain their properties. To be determined, never. Is there a plan? I am abiding, I'm abiding and staying away from, for the time being as I can understand if I live there permanently, I may not, I may not, I may have the same protective, opinions that many of the locals are expressing. Fear is a powerful defense mechanism. I get it. No one wants to be exposed to this deadly virus. However, at some point in the near future, we will have to ensure that our property, which we also pay taxes on just like permanent residents, is secure. Remember, non-resident property owners also contribute greatly to the OBX economy as tourism is the main driver for the community. Since we don't, since we don't rent out our home, we don't have a property management company that can flush our toilets, cut our grass, switch our HVACs over to AC, check our plumbing, check that no one has broken into our vandalized, or vandalized our house, and check on.
into or vandalized our house, and check on the general condition of our investment. We don't want to end up with mold, plumbing problems, an overgrown yard, or burglary issues down the road. So is the council ready to employ a company to check on and to do these things? We can't. The reason I understand the ban of non-resident property owners was put in place was, as I understand it, was put in place mainly to prevent importing the virus into the community and to protect the hospital, grocery stores, and the necessary service industries from being overwhelmed. I think it's likely that anyone who contacts the virus would not be treated at the OBX hospital but sent to the Tidewater Air for treatment, just to guess. As is the case for much of the county, country, I assume there are no restaurants open for business on the Outer Banks, so no chance of spreading it that way. Other venues where crowds congregate have also been prohibited and shut down, just like much of the rest of the country. Thank you. That completes the ones I have, Sheila. I didn't see Angela. Hold on. Not in my package. Out of my peripheral vision, line of sight.
Is that it?
Yes.
I got one more, yeah. This from Man Schorisma, Southern Shore 69 Hickory Trail. Former councilman Fred Newberry has shared me his email public comments for today's meeting, and I would like to say that I endorse his thinking and hardly agree that Southern Shores should have a no-growth budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, or better yet, a reduced budget for the next fiscal year. This is a time to be thinking about freezing town staff salaries and reducing property owners' ed-bolorm taxes, not increasing them. No doubt, you have heard that as of this morning, 10 people tested positive for COVID-19 in Dare County, including one person whose viral transmission has been attributed to community spread. In a case of community spread, if a case of community spread has indeed occurred, then we have an outbreak of the disease in Dare County. We just don't know the extent of it. Although the Department of Health and Human Services is not projecting when COVID-19 cases in North Carolina will reach their peak, it is clear from actions taken by Governor Cooper that NCDHHS does not believe that the peak will occur until late April at the earliest. It is not possible to project yet how diminished Dare County's and the town of Southern Shores revenues will be for fiscal year. I would also ask the town council to show empathy, concern, and interest in those property owners who would shoulder the majority tax burden of beach nourishment if you decide to approve a project today. You may not think the increase is significant for any oceanfront or oceanside property owners, but you would be wrong. Many of us who have property in proposed municipal district, service district one, do not have the wealth that Dare County's assessment of our property would seem to suggest. Others of us are losing significant mental income this year because of the COVID-19 emergency restrictions. Some of us have hefty mortgages to pay. Others are tasked with maintaining our properties with far less income than we anticipated. Everyone's financial circumstances are different. It should be considered in your decision-making just as you should consider known individual property owners' interests when you carve out exceptions to non-performing loss ordinance. You should not assume the tax increase suggested in the financial data in today's meeting packet. It's not a hardship on property owners. I can assure you that it is. I also do not understand why the commercial district is exempt from tax increase as part of the financing of a proposed beach nourishment project. Merchants in the marketplace would certainly benefit far more from such a project than the owners of an oceanfront flat top that's been in a family for 60 years or so or more and has only used a few weeks a year by the family. It is further noteworthy that unlike many other towns that have done beach nourishment, the town of Southern Shores is not contributing any monies from its general fund to pay for it, at least not that I saw in the data. That's all I have, Sheila. Thank you.
We have one citizen.
Paul, did you wish to speak? Just give us your name and address, Paul.
I just... I had some other comments I wanted to make, and maybe I'll make them later.
Can you first give us your name and address?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sorry, I should have told you that.
Paul Borzalino, 16th 7th Ave., Southern Shores. At this point, I just wanted to thank Tom and the control group for the tough decisions that you all have been making, and I'd ask you to pass that on. I know I sent it by way of an email, but I just wanted to do it publicly because I can only imagine how tough these decisions are. I know we're all being affected by them, but I just wanted to compliment you and the control group publicly. Thank you, Tom. And to the rest of the council, as you have worked probably indirectly through Tom to the council, tough times, tough decisions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else on Zoom with public comments, Sheila? Thank you.
Wait, someone just came in. Hold on. Ernie Dash, 26 Periwinkle Place.
So if you can find him and unmute him.
Ernie, if you can unmute yourself.
Got you. Now I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. If you speak louder.
Yes, this is Ernie Dash, and I live at 26 Periwinkle Place, and I would echo also my appreciation to the council and to the mayor and everybody for the work that you're doing. I am a second homeowner, and I share some of the comments that have been made, but at the same time, I'm hunkered down and up here in Williamsburg. The only thing that I would like to see is if there was some way that we could, in fact, come down and even spend just a day, just 24 hours, to check over the property and be sure that everything is in place. And I don't know how that would work, but any consideration that can be made that way would certainly be appreciated. It seems to me like the people are crossing that bridge every day, going up to a northern part of Virginia for jobs in Chesapeake or wherever, and they're returning. So us coming in and out and not staying for a long period of time, I would like to think would not be a hazard. Anyway, I offer that as for your consideration. Appreciate it. And somebody else can use the rest of my three minutes.
Thank you.
Mr. Garber would like to know if the council plans to address the comments that were made during public comment. And Bill Schreiner, 182 Ocean Boulevard, if you can unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
All right, you're up.
Hi, yeah. I just wanted to express my disagreement with the comment earlier praising the control group for a tough decision. I think actually what that decision did was sow a deep division amongst the different members of the tax base in Southern Shores, and I think it was executed very poorly. The ban at the bridge was not airtight, and anybody who understands the science knows that if you make a travel ban that is not airtight, you will eventually get the virus into the area that you're trying to protect. And given that workers came and went and that locals came and went, it really was a very, very unfair discriminatory action towards out-of-town property owners. Others have articulated all of the different reasons and the rights that we would have to be able to enjoy our property. I always felt that the argument that people made that the healthcare services on the Outer Banks were not sufficient to handle a large impact from the pandemic were a very false argument, since I believe most of those people, we certainly know 80% of them would shelter in place, that that would be the appropriate thing that they would be directed to do, and anyone who was severely affected would probably be removed from the island and taken care of at a different facility off the island. So I think it was a decision that was driven by fear and caused a great deal of unhappiness between people who formerly all felt that we were different kinds of participants in a same community. I've been coming down to the Outer Banks since the early 60s. My family has owned a house there since the early 60s, multiple houses, and this is the first time I ever felt like I was being treated really as a second-class citizen there. My question I'd like to finish up with, given the fact that you do have community spread now happening on the island, there really isn't a justification for keeping non-resident owners out anymore? There is a justification for enforcing rules around masks and space, just like the rest of the entire country does, but there is no longer a legitimate reason to stop people from coming on the island who own property there. So I would like to know, will you end it today? And if not today, what would be the criteria that you will use to end this unfair ban on non-resident owners from enjoying and using their property?
That's all the comments. That's all, Tom. Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. I couldn't hear that. As I read, at this time, closed public comment. And as I read the agenda, our next item of business is under number five, under new business. And I'll now call on Bonnie Swain to address this personnel policy change, emergency sick leave policy, tab eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 18th of 2020, Congress passed and the President signed into law the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, often referred to as the acronym FFCRA. With that, there was an emergency FMLA leave and emergency sick leave up to 80 hours that was granted for... there's six reasons as to why it could be granted to an employee. The law does not require first responders to be covered. I felt, in speaking with our personnel attorney, John Leidy, we were in agreement that this is something that we wanted to offer to all of our employees as a whole. So what we did was we put a policy together, and John gave his blessing on it, and that's what you will find behind tab number eight. We were told by the School of Government, which I think I have been on about five webinars in the last seven days about this because it's ever-changing, trying to keep up with the changes and our attorneys and that sort of thing. So we were told that the town manager had the authority to approve the policy, and then when we had our next scheduled meeting, that the council could go back and approve that policy. And Wes approved this policy on March 30th. So like I said, it's there at tab number eight, so that's the policy, and we just need the council to approve that policy.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I would make a motion to adopt... Come here, Stella. I would make a motion to adopt retroactively the policies approved by the interim town manager as they relate to emergency paid sick leave and emergency FMLA leave. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll start with Jim once again, indicating by saying aye if you approve, agree.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Leo?
Aye.
Tom says aye. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is made and carried to adopt retroactively the policies approved by the interim town manager. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
You asked a question earlier, Sheila, about whether you heard had a question where the council would answer the comments in the public comment? Okay, we don't normally do that, but thank you. But we don't... Yeah, it's a policy we don't do that. Under 5B Amendment to Council Rules of Procedure, Section 8, Electronic Participation Count in Town Council Meetings. Ben, could you address that for us?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Tab nine, by the way.
There's a... Given the situation with the coronavirus and other emergency declarations and other sorts of things, and kind of a new world that we're living in right now, it seemed like it might get to the point where it would... there would be some information from CDC or from the state or something that required, safety-wise, for you not to be in a room together, but that didn't actually fix the problem of the fact that some things have to go on and government has to continue to act. And the way that most of the town government is managed is through votes of the town council. So when we saw that coming, we brought up with Wes to try and adopt an electronic meeting policy. Prior to the concept of the emergency that we're currently under, electronic meetings and electronic meeting participation has had a fair amount of back and forth between different entities about whether or not it's legal for municipalities, primarily because there's a statute in the Open Meetings Act that tends to talk about electronic meetings, but there's a couple statutes in the municipalities' chapter that relate to being physically present in the council chambers. So historically, we have always felt that there was a risk in having any electronic participation. The School of Governments tended to agree with that. Their guidance has always been, if you're going to do it, to have a policy in place that's in writing so that everybody understands what the program is and everybody has a guideline, and that the... They're looking at the physically present concept. You deal with... You don't count remote participants for quorum purposes, and you don't count remote participants for voting purposes. And then things like closed sessions, there's issues. I've heard of an issue where there was a closed session. It was an executive session of a company, but they were doing everything by phone, and they thought everybody had gotten off the phone, but there was somebody who wasn't supposed to stay, and they stayed and listened. So, you know, the concept of having remote participants involved in closed sessions was more interesting. And even if it wasn't where you could technologically keep someone else from being there, if you can't see everything around that person, you don't know who else might be there listening. You don't know who else might be there coercing them. There are a lot of risks associated with remote participation. So the School of Governments' perspective on it and our perspective on it is that if you're ever going to do it, that you need to have a policy in place. So we start with that, and we had some policies we had done for others. We started with that, and then we tried to consider the current emergency declaration and the fact that that might put you in a situation where it wasn't just one or two people who were remotely participating. You might have to build your quorum off of at least one or maybe all of the people being remote participants for safety purposes. So that's why we developed the rest of the policy to try and address that. It takes into account how to deal with closed sessions and trying to avoid them, and it also, at the end, recommends that council go back and attempt to correct... Or attempt to ratify the actions that it does take when there is an in-person meeting. So to clean up and say, we took these actions before, and to take another vote to just ratify the actions that you took during remote meetings to make sure it was... ratify the actions that you took during remote meetings to make sure it was clarified. There's also been some recent, I don't think it was a formal opinion, but there was a letter opinion from the Attorney General, State's Attorney General, that seemed to say, hey, it's okay to do it. They didn't really address the one part that's related to municipalities, other than saying, hey, you should think about that, which means that, yeah, it still exists, but we think it's, this is just something you're gonna have to do. So our perspective on that is that as long as you're trying to act reasonably, and you're not trying to circumvent the Open Meetings Act, and you're doing the best that you can, given the circumstances that exist based on a safety perspective, the likelihood of a court challenge, you know, a court challenge to that resulting in an issue is relatively low. But as you'll see in the policy that's presented, it also tries to keep you from avoiding taking action in remote meetings where there's not a quorum physically present in the chamber like there is here today, that you can't put off. I mean, if you can put it off, put it off, as long as you can until you have to deal with it. There are some things, as we all know, there are some things we just have to deal with, and when they come up, you gotta deal with them when you need to deal with them. But otherwise, the less you do, the more you can put off, the more, the less likely you're gonna run into issues with in the future. But there is a provision in the statute that if you're gonna have an electronic meeting, which we deem a meeting where everybody, or less than a quorum is present in the council chamber, you have to have something available for the public to see, they have to be able to come in here and watch, or, and I think you've got that today, you've got a quorum. If you didn't have a quorum, if all five of you were meeting remotely, you might still have to have a TV or something set up where somebody could see it. And I mean, I guess I could envision a situation where it was even so dangerous that staff couldn't come in, or that there was a true shelter in place, or martial law, or whatever level it gets to, and I think you just have to deal with that when it comes up. But at this point, the way things are currently working, I think that that's how you would do it, is to try and have something here for people to see. And then also taking, you know, the statute doesn't require, but to take reasonable efforts to try and do what you've done here with Zoom and try and make it available to the people who are here today. It actually worked out pretty well, these large TVs here, we can see all of you pretty well, and we can hear all of you pretty well, and hopefully you can hear me and the rest of the participants here. So that's what the electronic meeting policy is about. You know, it's not some new concept for the council as much as it is a new concept to address the strange situation that we're dealing with. And my hope is that we can all come back to meeting before too long, rather than become more remote, but I think that where we stand today, more remote might be more likely, at least for a short period of time.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone have a question for Ben, or questions for Ben?
This only implies if there's an emergency, you might correct, a state of emergency?
Absent a state of emergency, you have to have a quorum. The policy has two parts. So there's a state of emergency section, which is number two down, and then number one is when there's not a state of emergency, someone can remotely participate, but they can't vote and they can't be counted for quorum purposes.
Okay.
And you don't have to provide the external audio and video, because the meetings actually happen.
I just want a little clarification on.
But it's a lot more open and tries to let you do more in the emergency situation, because that would be the situation. And it's more than just a declared emergency. If, you know, God, it includes a real safety issue. If there was some sort of other strange safety issue, that people couldn't be in the same room, but the town government had to continue to do something, maybe even deal with that safety issue, then it allows for that as well. And my expectation is that when the General Assembly goes back in session, that they're gonna have a number of different problems to solve and to address even retroactively, because this is the situation that it's not just y'all, I mean, it's businesses and other government entities and individuals, everyone trying to figure it out as they go, and so that there's gonna have to be some legal changing at the state, and I'm sure federal level as well.
Thank you.
Matt, you, Elizabeth, you have any questions for Ben?
I don't.
Thank you, Matt.
I guess the only thing I would ask is, what kind of responsibility does the town have if someone were to hack in, for lack of a better word, and get information that they ought not to, or whatever? I mean, what kind of exposure does the town have, even with this policy in place?
Well, it's pretty limited. I mean, the only time that there's gonna be any situation that there wouldn't be anything that would already be public. I mean, you're recording the meeting, you're gonna publish the meeting, everything we're talking about is gonna be subject to public records, and is gonna be part of this open meeting. So the closed session would be the only issue, and, you know, I think I would recommend that, you know, we don't do that unless you can, unless we can ensure that the technology limits it to just the people who can be there.
Okay, thanks.
Who has to declare a state of emergency for these rules to kick in? Does it have to be at the local level, or is it like the governor declares a state of emergency for the state but doesn't affect us for some reason?
I think it would be a state of emergency that applies to you. If the governor's state of emergency applies to you, then it applies to you. If there's a local state of emergency, then it would apply to you. If the federal state of emergency applies to you, I don't think that it's always, you know, in this circumstance, the state is statewide, but it's not always statewide. Sometimes it's the Outer Banks, and that's the governor declaring an emergency in a certain area. So I think if it covers your geographic area, then it would be covered here. Of course, if you didn't, you know, this wouldn't be something that you would, you know, if you felt like you could come and y'all could all meet despite the declaration, then you could certainly do that, but that would be a situation when you could.
I can't believe I'm gonna ask this, because I've been through more hurricanes out here than I can count or even remember. Do we declare a state of emergency when a, like a hurricane hits us?
Normally, the county does, and we'll follow suit. Or we can actually, we can actually have our own rules if we have to, under the state of emergency, but we try to follow suit normally. Does that make sense?
I would assume we would cancel it during the hurricane, but it's just all that mess that we deal with afterwards that, okay.
And I think you would continue on your historical way of dealing with those sorts of emergencies, is that if you, you know, you'd cancel or move a meeting, and then, you know, if you had a meeting, you would try and get to it or move it around. But again, even in that circumstance, if for some reason everybody couldn't get here, but it was a state of emergency, but something needed to happen, there was some decision that needed to be at the council level, not something that the mayor or the manager could address, then this would give you a path to do that. My recommendation would be try to avoid using the emergency level provisions of this, if at all possible, but it's there if it's necessary to be used.
Yeah, the question's, counsel?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the electronic participation in town council meetings that changes proposed.
I'll second it.
We've got to include in that, I think, to address electronic participation in town council meetings and electronic meetings of town council, I believe.
I think you're approving this document, is that correct?
That's okay. That's what you're saying, yes. Do I have a second, counsel?
Yeah, I second it.
Thank you, Leo. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, I'm sorry, if not, let's start with Jim again. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I say aye. So the motion is made and carried, five, five zero.
And one last thing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There are a number of towns and counties and other local governments across the state doing this and coming up with policies and dealing with this. And part of the reason why our policy, you know, you adopted a policy two weeks ago, and then this is adjusted, is because we've been dealing, we represent multiple local government clients, and we've refined it as we've gone along.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This time, I reopened up, don't want public comment. I would say, as we reopen this, that our policy in the past has been, when we have meetings, people are here in the room with us, we do not normally respond to those inquiries or questions or comments. I want to maintain that same level of policy. I will assure those who spoke, reference to access to the county and the reasons for what's happening and why we're doing it this way. Those concerns will be shared at the control group level tomorrow, for those of you who had to have those concerns. And to share it here, I will share them tomorrow with the control group members. Anyone else want to speak? Sheila?
I can't figure this out. Can I say something? There's Matt.
We can hear you, Ann.
Well, may I just say briefly? May I have a public comment? I lost my connection in my video here.
Ann, please give us one second, please.
All right. Okay, I would just like to tell, oh, I got an echo in my phone. The people who gave comments, the non-resident property owners, they might be very interested to know that today, six non-resident property owners in Outer Banks filed a federal lawsuit in the Eastern District of the North Carolina U.S. Court. So this issue has come to a head, I would say, when you have six property owners filing suit claiming constitutional violations. And I'm glad to hear, Mr. Mayor, that you're gonna bring it up in the control group, because I agree with the people who've spoken. I also have relatives who are non-resident property owners, but they have me here to look after their property, as well as property managers. So I just wanted to unite with those people and let them know that legal action has been taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Borzalino has signed up for a second.
Yes, Paul. Yes.
Yes, sir. No, we need it.
Again, I'm Paul Borzalino, sixteen, Seventh Ave. Although you tabled all the issues in number four, A through F, to the April twenty-first budget meeting, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, so that maybe they could be looked at before that meeting. The material that came out, your tab five, I think was the way you titled it, it was like pages eleven through thirty. I'm pretty good with numbers, and I found it a little bit hard to follow, so maybe that could be looked at from, somebody else look at it and see if it's able to be understood. One of the things that I didn't see in there, maybe I missed it, was there was no calculation of how many houses are in each MSD, and obviously, that's what a lot of people want to know. If it's this amount of revenue expected in each MSD, you need to know how many houses are in each one to divide that and figure that out. There was also reference to townwide, and my thinking was, if someone was in MSD one or two or three, their revenue wouldn't be expected again as part of a townwide assessment, so maybe that could just be clarified in the material. And the other comment related to beach nourishment, and I can't believe I'm gonna say this, because I was literally on the beach this morning, helping Joel Newton repair one of the crossovers, because it got washed out in Seventh Ave. I mean, it became a, about three-foot drop-off at the bottom step from the recent weather. But maybe it makes sense for Southern Shores to coordinate with Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk and Duck, with a plan to maybe delay by one year the beach nourishment, but go ahead and do all the planning, do all the figuring, do all the calculations, have it ready to go, but maybe plan, a lot of our push to go fast was to coordinate with them to have the cost savings. Maybe it makes sense to get all the plans figured out, but delay by a year, because none of us know what's gonna be the financial situation come summertime. We don't know whether, or when, or if there's gonna be tourists coming in. If it is opened up again, if we open up, we don't know how many are gonna come. I just think it's too unsure of a situation to commit money to until we all know better what the situation is, but I'd hate to see the momentum lost. In other words, go ahead with the planning, figure it out, be ready to go, but maybe that plan be for nourishment one year later. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else want to put a comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. This time, I'll close public comment. I just have one thing I'd like to say before I turn it over to the other council members to have their say. I want to assure our residents and non-resident property owners alike, this council and our finance and budget officer are keenly aware of the potential negative impact on future availability of funds for our town. I think we all have to acknowledge the fact that we don't know. We do know we're gonna lose revenue directly and indirectly because of this terrible impact of this virus, and that's all I have. Elizabeth, do you have something you'd like to add?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just would like for, to say very briefly, you know, a lot of very strong feelings on both sides of the, of the closing, the access to Dare County, and I hope that, you know, that our community can survive the hard feelings, and it's, they are, they're real, and, you know, I get it. I would like to say, though, that truly and really, the only way we're gonna get through this is for us all to practice our, the recommendations provided by the public health experts. So please, please, don't go out when you don't need to, and all that stuff, wash your hands, keep your distance, because that's truly and really what's gonna get us to the other side of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Matt?
No comments.
Thank you, Matt. Leo?
I just want to echo what Elizabeth said. We're all in this together, and there's some pain, we don't all like it, but we got it. We didn't ask for it, but we got it. So the control group, I know you're doing, trying to do the best you can for everybody, and I encourage everybody to practice that safe distance of staying your six feet away from each other. Y'all can see we're spread out here, so stay safe.
Just have to raise your voice. Pardon? Just have to raise your voice.
No, I thought I had it up high enough.
I'm talking about, if you want to stay six feet apart, you gotta talk a little louder.
Yeah.
Six feet. Jim?
I have three things, and I'll make all of them real quick. First of all, we've gotten reports that only about a very, very low percentage of Southern, or Dare County residents that participated in the census. I think it's about a twenty-two percent participation rate, the state average is forty-two. I just implore everybody to do better, you know, let's do better. Second thing is on the budget, I can guarantee I'll be going into that with austerity imprinted on the front of my brain. So I think that's a feeling shared by everybody here on council, but I can only speak for myself. And then finally, again, thanks to the staff, I think this Zoom process has worked better than any other towns' attempts at it out here yet, so. than any other town's attempts at it out here yet, so good job, guys.
Thank you, Jim. I would second that as well. Any further business? If anybody knows about? If not, counsel, I'd make a motion, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Wes.